I'd like to call to order, please, the regular meeting on Monday, August 18, 2014. It is now 6:00 PM. Would you please join Councilman Osborne in the pledge allegiance and invocation and stay standing for the invocation?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Heavenly Father, from the tiniest of our people to our oldest, we pray for all of our citizens. Our ask is great: jobs, safety, quality of life, health, and the wisdom to make decisions that help us obtain these things. We recognize the needs in other areas, and we lift up to you, the city of Ferguson, and ask that you bring healing, forgiveness, and calm to a hurting community. Our joy is to have your presence surrounding us always, and we ask for the continued watch over our military and public safety. Guard them always. In your mighty name we pray. Amen.
Thank you. We're all here, and even Wally. But, Wally, are you listening to us?
Yes, I am. Thanks, Mayor.
All right. Well, welcome. What I want to say is, welcome back to all of you. I know some of you have -- I'm going to tell the citizens, some of you have worked this summer, even during your time off, and so I appreciate that. And I particularly appreciate the Vice Mayor taking time, a few days, in office so I could take a break. I didn't get much, but I'm planning on taking one very soon. So, Vice Mayor will be in charge again. So, let's go to, first of all, we have, let's go to, we're on just a minute. All right, we have one, everybody, don't we? We have one communication tonight, and our Vice Mayor, Joe Pizzillo, is going to take care of that. Joe?
There's been an honor bestowed upon our lovely mayor, and if you would, please follow me down out front.
Okay.
I don't know if everybody knows, but our mayor, in early July, our own mayor was recognized as one of the most 50, most influential women in Arizona business by publication Arizona Business Magazine, okay? She was selected by a 12-member judging panel out of roughly, in this case, 1,000 nominated candidates who were in the running for the honor. Out of the 50 women selected, guess what? Our mayor was the only one selected that was elected. How's that? Okay? On behalf of the entire council, on behalf of the entire council, I want to extend my heartfelt congratulations on this achievement. Congratulations, Mayor, you deserved it. And you continue to be a wonderful ambassador for all of the entire city and this lovely team you have behind you. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, and I would be remiss if I didn't say something about this. This is really, truly, an honor. I didn't expect this at all. And you'll know how I feel about this, a little overwhelmed again, if you go to the Arizona Business Magazine and you look at the names of the past honorees. It's startling. These are some pretty influential people who have done great service for the state of Arizona, and I'm just proud to be a part of that team. So, thank you for recognizing me. I have to tell you, I usually don't brag about things, but this is one thing I sent notes to my kids and my friends, and I sent a lot of emails out on this one because I'm terribly proud of this one. But, there is a reason behind this, and it's you, it's the rest of the council, it's the city, because I'm representing the city. And it's the job you're doing. I couldn't go out into the public and say what I say if it wasn't true, and I couldn't confirm the action that our council and staff takes and the progress they've made for our city. So, you know, you're the, I use this expression, I like it, it's an old-fashioned one, there's proof in the pudding. And you are the proof of our success in Goodyear, and thank you very much.
Mayor, can I say something?
Yes, I recognize.
I really thank you. You know, seven years ago, when I was elected, you were the one that truly took me under your wing and helped me get used to this craziness we call the city of Goodyear. And I have to tell you, it's about leadership, and that's the quality you have. And you do it in a loving manner, and you do it with great strength, and you're a people person. You know, we went through a time in this city of great challenges, and we had some division on this council. And quite frankly, when you became mayor, you were able to heal this group, and we were able to get through these challenges as a team. And even when we, you know, agreed to disagree, that's okay, because we still make it through. But it wasn't just for the city of Goodyear, because I also was able to see you do those same kinds of things at Westmark, at GPEC, and just across this region. And so, that's about leadership. You have a great team, but it takes a great leader to build that. And so, I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Thank you, Elliot. Okay. All right, now is the time for a citizen who would like to address our city council, and we do have one card that I already have. And so, this is Mr. James Burke from the New American Legion in Goodyear. Mr. Burke, please come forward, and while you come forward, I'll just remind you of the little spiel I have to do for you. And would you also introduce your guests while you're up there? So, these are the rules. Where are all the rules? Each speaker has three minutes. The yellow light and buzzer will let you know when you have 30 seconds left to speak. And before you speak, I would like you to identify your name and clearly state directly your name and address. There are several things we can do, and I know yours is very positive you're coming for, because we shared a short conversation before this, but council is, they are not allowed to do much responding, but they have three possibilities. They can respond to criticism, they can request that the staff investigate and report on a matter, or they can request that the matter be scheduled on a future agenda. So, the floor is yours now.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, thank you very much for allowing me to be here. My name is Jim Burke, and this is my friend John Guile. We're members of the American Legion. I'm not here to ask or solicit anything from anybody, but just to ask for a blessing from the city to allow us to proceed with the American Legion in Goodyear. I've been a member of the American Legion 16 years now. I'm a five-time commander in my American Legion post in Avondale. What I'm seeking to do is to help the veterans and their families. Councilmember Sharon, you know I've been with Avondale for quite a long time. So, all I'm asking for is a blessing. We're going to pursue this. We want a blessing. We want to work with the community, the police officers, the firemen, volunteers, the air force, the airmen and whatnot, and make this possible, that we can, you know, have an American Legion here in Goodyear. Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Burke. I really appreciate you coming for it.
Any questions or anything you may have for me?
And Mr. Guile, also, thank you for coming. I understand you're a business owner in our city, so we really appreciate this. And you'll, we'll have more information, I gather, that you're going to be?
I have a whole bunch. I don't have time, but I have a whole bunch.
Good. And I guess what I'll say right now is that we will definitely receive that information. If you'll send it in to the city manager's office, we'll go from there. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
That rule is very difficult, you know that. Yeah, okay. All right, so now also is the time for someone to speak if they have, want to speak on a non-agenda item. Is there anybody that would like to speak on a non-agenda item? All right, is there anybody who wants to speak on one of our agenda items? All right, let's go on. If the city clerk would please read consent agenda items 6.1 through 6.6 by title only.
Item 6.1, approved draft minutes from a regular meeting and a special meeting held on July 7, 2014, and a regular meeting and a special meeting held on July 14, 2014. Item 6.2, number one, adopt resolution number 14-1633, declaring as a public record that certain document filed with the city clerk titled ordinance number 14-1297, amending Chapter 10 Health and Sanitation of the Goodyear City Code, providing for penalties, severability, and an effective date. Number two, adopt ordinance number 14-1297, amending and replacing in its entirety Chapter 10 Health and Sanitation of the Goodyear City Code, providing for penalties, severability, and an effective date. Item 6.3, number one, adopt resolution number 14-1634, declaring as a public record that certain document filed with the city clerk titled ordinance number 14-1298, amending Chapter 12 Sewers of the Goodyear City Code, providing for penalties, severability, and an effective date. Number two, adopt ordinance number 14-1298, amending and replacing in its entirety Chapter 12 Sewers of the Goodyear City Code, providing for penalties, severability, and an effective date. Item 6.4, number one, adopt resolution number 14-1635, declaring as a public record that certain document filed with the city clerk titled ordinance number 14-1299, amending Chapter 14 Water of the Goodyear City Code, providing for penalties, severability, and an effective date. Number two, adopt ordinance number 14-1299, amending and replacing in its entirety Chapter 14 Water of the Goodyear City Code, providing for penalties, severability, and an effective date. Item 6.5, approve mayor and council appointments to council subcommittees for fiscal year 2014-15. One, boards, commissions, and committee appointments, subcommittee, reappoint councilmember Holman, councilmember Campbell, and councilmember Osborne. Number two, community funding review, subcommittee, reappoint Vice Mayor Pizzillo, councilmember Osborne, and councilmember Stip. Item three, adopt subcommittee, audit, subcommittee, reappoint Vice Mayor Pizzillo, councilmember Loretano, and councilmember Stip. Item 6.6, adopt resolution 14-1657, authorizing the release and relinquishment of a public utility easement located in Lot 69 of the Estrella parcel 58 subdivision.
Thank you very much. Does anyone from the public wish to remove an item from the consent agenda? Does anyone from the council wish to remove an item from the consent agenda? Councilman, Vice Mayor?
Just a general comment for those that are kind of watching on the changes that we're making to these codes. We've had thorough vetting during the process on work sessions, so you'll see it on the consent, but this has been thoroughly discussed in prior meetings. So, I just want to make sure anybody who's watching this knows that, as a council, we've thoroughly vetted these changes earlier.
Thank you, very well said. Could I please then have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
I heard a motion by Councilman Osborne and a second by Councilman Holman. Roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Pizzillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Osborne?
Aye.
Councilmember Loretano?
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Stip?
Aye.
Councilmember Holman?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
Passes 7-0.
All right, we're on business now, 7.1, and we have 7.2. But let me explain, there are two items, and Nathan Torres is from Parks and Recreation Director, will present, but we'll vote separately on each of these items. So, Nathan, would you like to start on 7.1?
Thank you, Mayor and council. The Parks and Recreation Advisory Commission was established in July of 2012 to serve in a volunteer advisory capacity to city council, as well as the Parks and Recreation Department. As you are aware, we have a very active commission, most recently, they worked very hard at completing the Parks and Recreation Trails and Open Space Master Plan. On behalf of the council subcommittee for boards, commissions, and committee appointments, councilmembers Osborne, Campbell, and Holman, we ask that you adopt ordinance 14-1305, adding an alternate non-voting member to the commission. This member will fill any future unexpired terms.
Okay, so, and so you've now just presented 7.1 and 7.2, is that correct?
And 7.2, subsequent to this approval, or pending this approval, we will ask that you appoint Raquel Landfield to fill the commission seat for the unexpired term, recently vacated, and appoint Kim Harris to the newly created alternate position.
Thank you very much. All right, will the city clerk please read the ordinance of 7.1?
Adopt ordinance number 14-1305, amending Article 3-13 Parks and Recreation Advisory Commission, subsection 3-13-4A, commission membership and term of the Goodyear City Code, providing severability and an effective date.
Thank you. Could I have a motion and a second, please?
So moved.
Second.
All right, I heard a motion from Councilman Stip and a second from Vice Mayor Pizzillo, open for council discussion. Council discussion? No discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Osborne?
Aye.
Councilmember Loretano?
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Stip?
Aye.
Councilmember Holman?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Pizzillo?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
Passes 7-0.
Okay, so, now I'm on 7.2, and you've already read that? Is that included in what you just read? No?
No.
All right, please read that.
I'm here.
Wait a minute, now just make sure, because we did, when we do this, I get confused. He did his presentation, okay? All right.
And now you want to ask for a motion and a second to appoint Raquel Landefeld?
Right, right, okay. And you've read it, so I will now, no? Yes?
And I can read it for you.
Yes, please read it again.
Okay. Can I, you need a motion and a second to appoint Raquel Landefeld to fill the unexpired term of Erin Bertram to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Commission with term expiring December 3, 2016.
Thank you. Can I have a motion and a second, please?
So moved.
Second.
I heard a motion from Councilman Stip and a second from Councilman Osborne, open for council discussion? No discussion? All right. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Loretano?
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Stip?
Aye.
Councilmember Holman?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Pizzillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Osborne?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
Passes 7-0.
Well, since I've done this and asked you to do it, do the second one, too, please.
Sure, Mayor. The second one is, I need a motion and a second to appoint Kim Harris as an alternate non-voting member to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Commission.
We kind of switched this around tonight. May I have a motion, please, and a second?
So moved.
All right. Who's got the motion? Okay, Councilman Osborne, who's got the second? Councilman Loretano, roll call vote, open for council discussion. No discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Stip?
Aye.
Councilmember Holman?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Pizzillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Osborne?
Aye.
Councilmember Loretano?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
Passes 7-0.
Will the city clerk please administer the oath of loyalty? Councilman Osborne?
You know, I would just like to say, thank you, ladies. You know, the best CEOs in business around the world will always be searching for their next leaders going forward, and it's awesome that our city has so many committees and commissions that our citizens can really come up through, you know, the ranks, learning stuff about our city, and really, we appreciate the time that you guys give and, you know, want to be a part. And we know that you're moms, and, you know, you have a love for what's going on, and we really thank you for that. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Any other comments? Joe?
Just welcome aboard.
Thank you for the opportunity.
You're quite welcome. We look forward to it. Thank you. All right, does any council have any comments or anything you want to talk about tonight? All right, I'm going to turn it over to the city manager, then.
Yes, Mayor and council, welcome back.
Thank you.
Five weeks, and so we made this first agenda.
I'm feeling a little, I'm feeling a little distant here, not knowing, I got to get back in the groove again.
But, at the same time, this agenda was fairly short tonight. I do have one item for follow-up. We will work with American Legion on some of their opportunities that they're looking -- I too am having technical difficulties over here.
What's Lola saying over there?
Why not you? Why just me?
Yes, you lean on the wrong button and it starts talking to you. But, we will be following up with the American Legion as they provide information to us. We'll share that with the council. The other is, just in terms of activities, you know, Mayor and several of the council members had an opportunity to be at the 303 opening this past Saturday. And I do have a little bit of information on that. For those that are there, that were there, you certainly know this. For some of those that were out of town, we, it was a great opening for what we consider one of the most vital connections in the West Valley. And I do appreciate staff, Shereen Zia and staff working closely with ADOT. City of Goodyear actually been working with ADOT for several months to get that all coordinated, the parking, the ingress egress, et cetera, and it was very well received. We had several hundred that were just there for the speaking parts of it alone, let alone the families that started getting there early in the morning before the ribbon cuttings. We had speakers from, head of ADOT, which was John Halakowski, Governor Jam Brewer, our own mayor, Georgia Lord, Mayor Michael Lavalt, who's a MAG Regional Council Chair, and then Carla Petty with the Federal Highway Association out of the, at the federal agency. But we were excited. We had several of our staff there that had an opportunity to showcase some of the areas. We specifically had Parks and Recreation. We had aquatics that were represented. Fire and police had information there as well. And the development community, some of them were represented. And I will tell you that there was a lot of excitement on the part of the development community that was there, talking about what the 303 means. And I, the mayor did receive this, we will figure out where to put it. It's too big for a license plate, but what it says is Loop 303 Regional West Valley Connection, connecting Loop 303 Bob Stump Memorial Parkway, Interstate 10 to US 60, Saturday, August 16. So, we're extremely excited about what this means in terms of economic development opportunities for the community, and thank you for so many of you that had an opportunity to share in that this weekend. Appreciate it.
Well, kudos to staff, because it was well done. Just terrific. It was, it could have been a very difficult morning, but they did have a tent where you could get it in shade at the beginning. It did get a little hot for the people in the audience during the ceremony itself, and I apologize for that, but God didn't hear me on that one, so everybody had to sit out in the hot sun. But, we've heard some remarks from people that said the sun was a bit much for them, but they enjoyed the ceremony. Any response here to it? I mean, the people that rode up on their bicycles.
Oh, yeah.
There are a lot of people on the highway. Sherry?
Yeah, a woman from ADOT, I don't remember who she was, she came up and said, "I really love Goodyear. We have such a beautiful city. Everyone does such a wonderful job," so that, that was a very positive.
Yeah, it was, it was a special day.
It was exciting.
Yeah, and let's face it, guys, it was, it's almost done, okay? Well, not quite.
The ramp to the North 303 was open this afternoon.
Oh, is that right? Good, good. Glad to hear that. So, our next goal is to go south.
Next goal is south, and stay tuned, where staff continues to work on that closely with ADOT and MAG. So, there are developments there, and as we get to the point of updating council, we will. But, the whole, what is there now, the rest of it will all open up within the next month. So, while there've been limited openings now, the, all the roads will be opened in mid-September.
Good. Anything else from council? Yes, Councilman Osborne?
Mr. Dahlke, if, I know that we've spoken about this, but, you know, we finally have a chance to look at the Estrella retention basins, since we've had a lot of this rain. Will you be able to get back to us in the next week or two regarding what's been found out about that? That, and also with the past news regarding the Arizona Sports and Tourism Authority, and, you know, letting our citizens know, and I know we have been letting them know that we have a plan, that we do have a plan, but, you know, I think this is the time now to let them know again, because it's out there amongst everybody, that, you know, reminding them, Goodyear, as upset as we are that this is occurring, and we still hope for 2021 to come, you know, to light, but we do have a plan for the next few years. So, just wanted to bring that up.
Yes, Mayor and Councilmember Osborne, two things. One, on retention basins in Estrella, the report that we received is a grain through this last event, but there's also some improvements that are going on that will be done over the next couple of months, too, that will really enhance that. We'll give council updates as those get installed, but, so, it's, there are improvements being made. As it relates to the, you know, yes, there's been quite a bit of media coverage on ASTA's announcement as it relates to the projections on the numbers of when we get reimbursed. And we're well aware that those numbers change year in and year out. It's all related to the revenues that come in from hotel tax and car rental tax. The one thing we plan on doing with this, the mayor and council, is actually, in communications, we'll be providing information to the mayor and council, so the public has benefit of hearing that as well. We do have a plan in place, you're absolutely correct. There is a lot of information that we feel that could be shared that really would also, not just benefit the public, but also bring council back up to speed as well, because many of these agreements go back several years. So, that is in our planning as well, but thank you.
Well, and I think also the public should be assured that we will definitely be talking to ASTA article, it was in the paper, the conversation will be there, so that we can look into our future and see how we can affect this. So, it's not like we've just thrown our arms up. And I'm going to say it again, Joe, you came up with an idea, and with the finance department, with Larry and his brilliance, we came up with the savings plan. So, since we have the opportunity, I'm just going to let you repeat it one more time, and hopefully, some of those people out, and especially the people that are out there blogging on this, that have not put the correct information down, would you do that for me?
I'd be.
You have to have your microphone on.
It's my understanding, this is the third year, Larry, third budget year? We've got, I guess sinking funds probably not the correct term, but it's similar to a sinking fund. We're setting money aside each year that can be used for one time, but what it does is it creates capacity for us, so when the principal payment actually comes due, we will have money there to make that principal. So, again, this is foresight, not just, it's a team effort for, as a council, every council bought off on this, finance bought off on this, so that we were looking, instead of waiting till the principal came in, thinking, now what are we going to do? We've got a plan in place to address with it now. With that being said, would I love to have that money show up when it's supposed to? Of course. But like any good plan, you always have plan B, to make sure that you're covered in case all the possibilities that you hope don't happen. And we do have a plan, so I feel very confident of that. But again, I still would like us to keep hoping and pushing that the money does get to us, because what that would do is free up the money we've set aside as well, so. But no, we do have a plan.
Well, that's why the conversation has to stay alive, and we will continue with that, and give it great effort. So, I believe that's it for. Oh, Councilman Loretano?
And this is for the city manager. With all the storms that we've had recently and everything, we've got a lot of campaign signs literally floating around, ripped to shreds, and I know some parts of the valley, people are literally taking them. What is our policy to notify the candidate, or what do we do, or, I mean, how do we handle that? When do they have to be down after the primary?
Councilmember Loretano and Mayor Lord, I believe it's 15, I'm not sure exactly, but I think it's at least 15 days after the election that it has to come down, is that correct? 15 days after the election? What they're supposed to do is put addresses on the back of the signs so that they can be contacted in case there's a problem with their signs. So, possibly.
Can we have code look into that and drive around, because it is pretty, it's just a shambles on Bullard, and it really is. It should be the responsibility of the candidate. I know when we all ran, we were out there all the time. I know when we all ran, we were out there all the time putting them back up again.
Correct.
But obviously, some of them haven't visited their signs in a while.
Correct, and you have to be careful.
So, it's against the law for us to touch them.
Correct, I was just going to mention that. We're not allowed to touch them.
You cannot be out there hooking, fixing those signs, and that's why none of us have done anything, because I would have if I could.
That's why I'm asking him, because some of them are like floating.
So, if we could just have a sort of manager, if we just talked to the code compliance and have them go around and get those names and telephone numbers and give those people a call.
Thank you.
Yes.
All right. Then, Steve, we're, I just have, the next meeting is going to be on the 25th. We have a work session and a regular meeting, and the next one will be on, well, we'll just stay with the next month on that date, okay? All right, thank you, council. That's, again, nice to have you back, and we'll see you at the next meeting. Meeting adjourned.